Hey everyone, it's Claire Campos O'Neil and I'm here with Nicole Abshire, my amazing co-host for Go Behind the Ballot. We have an amazing episode for y'all. We are speaking with Candace Hunter. She is running for the Austin School Board for District One. And she has so much knowledge about education. We talked about the teacher shortage, what TEA is, her school board race, all kinds of amazing things. Nicole, what am I missing?
Well, I think you covered it, but well, how about what it is like to be a teacher? I mean, she really touched on all of the various pressures and why we are in this teacher shortage that we are in and how long it's been coming. So she was super informative. She is definitely an expert on a gajillion things. So sit back and enjoy because she is really a great listen and really knowledgeable.
Yes, get ready to learn lots of amazing things. All right, well Candace, thank you for joining us this morning. Just to start things off, can you tell a little bit, a little bit about your story? Who you are, what brings you to us this morning? And as you're going to share about education and all that great stuff.
Yeah, so I'm a native Austinite, or maybe I shouldn't say native, but I am a fourth generation Austinite. And I am a product of Austin ISD, so I've always lived here. I did go away for a little while to school, actually to become a lawyer. So I, my major was political science for three years. And then at some point, something just clicked and I was like, now I have to tell my parents. They just spent three, you know, three years worth of dough on something I'm not going to do. And when I told them I was going to become a teacher, they were like, oh my God, finally. We didn't know if you were ever going to realize that you should be a teacher. And I was like, really?
What kind of law were you going to study?
Oh, I was just actually criminal, criminal law. Yeah, so I'm like, I grew up on all of the eighties legal shows and like LA Law and those sorts of things.
Ooh, I loved LA Law.
I just really wanted to be a lawyer. Super love to be in front of people talking. You know, teacher, you have a captive audience, so that worked for me well. And so after I switched over and it just like, all of the struggling I had done in three years of law, you know, getting ready for law school and LSATs and moot court. And then all of a sudden, when I jumped to education, everything just flowed. And so I graduated, I began teaching you guys. And I was not really teaching, I will always say I was facilitating. Because every kid that I was in an affluent school, they came to you ready bait. You know, there was no, it's like add water and mix and you were done. And then I came back home because I was going to have a baby. And I stayed home for five years and then I came back. A lot changed in five years. And I wound up at Webb Middle School, got hired. The senior that TEA, the Texas Education Agency said, this school has failed too much. We gotta close it. And I sucked. I was like the worst teacher ever because I'd never taught immigrant students. I'd never taught children living in poverty. I just didn't have any of those skills. So I just sat down and was like, ah duh, you were a kid raised in poverty in Austin ISD schools? What did you need? And I became that. And of course, that year our school was saved. We scored, went from 35 to 85 in social studies, which is what I taught. And then I just was like, oh my God, I know what to do. I'm in my groove and I've been doing that ever since. I will tell you as a teacher, I never, ever went to a school board meeting. Never, I didn't have time. I didn't know what was going on. In 2015, I left the classroom because I had an eighth grader who's on the spectrum. And when you have to manage eight different teachers with an IEP, you don't have time for full-time work. And you guys, that's when I started digging in to all of the stuff that was going on. And I began seeing the inequities and literally at first it was just the inequalities. It was like, that's not even the same, like Brown versus Board sentence was supposed to already be changed. And so that's one thing that I did. And then it just snowballed from there. And the people were like, well, I don't know how to do this. And I was like, well, I think I can help you. The, I guess the thing that really turned it for me was the pandemic. Thank you horrible coronavirus, I guess. People were freaking out about the STAR test. People were freaking out. And I was like, you know, messaging people and I was like, I can't message 800 people. What, how? And then my kid was like, why don't you just make a video? And I was like, duh, we got everything in the house. So I made a video and I was like, so about the STAR test, let's talk. And then I was like, oh, and this is going on in Texas. And then, oh, this. And so it became like a weekly video series. Then I did a podcast with another community member who was like, hey, thank you for being a guest. Would you want to be a co-host? And then like fast forward today, that's where I am. Advocate, co-host on a podcast and now running for school board.
That's really amazing. Jumping in both at the same time, both of us excited. I want to jump back to Satini, but before we move too far in the other direction, which is, I don't know Candace, if you and I have touched base on the fact that I was a public school teacher. But now at this point, it was 10 years ago, four 10 years. And I too, never went to a board meeting, really had no idea what was happening at the state level in terms of, of, of education in that, that portion of how everything works. So I think that's really interesting that, because now I see the need to know all of those things and to be informed and to advocate for ourselves, you know, if I were still a teacher. But it's so wild to me that I didn't see it at the time. And I guess because it is such a, it's such an immersive job, right? It's so consuming in all ways that kind of the last thing, I guess I had space for, capacity for, was also advocating for the job at that level. So it's so awesome that you're there to be the voice of teachers and for teachers.
This is jumping ahead a little bit. I was going to ask about parents, but for teachers, what do you think teachers should be paying attention to in these school board meetings?
So anything that actually is affecting the school board that's coming from the state, right? Because all of the things generally in our local school districts, and I speak for urban school districts, we're going to be a bit more progressive. So there's not a lot you have to watch for. There's always going to be the contingents that want to burn books or, you know, not have sex ed, you know, like in high school even. But just the general, like keeping your eye on what is the state doing? And that's, that's going to, that's going to show up in your local board meeting because they're going to have to decide, how close do we want to, you know, sail to the age on this type of item before we get snagged by TA or even the governor? And so those are the types of things. I always suggest, like, I wish there were more podcasts that were focused on local. In fact, I think every district should have a podcast, honestly, right? But just to focus on just that district. So you can tune in for 20 minutes, 30 minutes and find out what's happening and know, okay, now I know what to watch for, but not every school district. I know that Dallas has one and I think Houston might have one. And then, you know, we're kind of the one for Austin. But I think that's important, but teachers really need to watch what's coming down from the state because that's what's going to play out in their classrooms. The general, like local things, they're kept abreast on just in like their PLCs and their staff meetings.
So let's take a little bit of a step back. Can you tell us what is the TEA and what is their role regarding public education in Texas?
A couple of things to know is that the Texas Education Agency is basically what you might, in some states, they call the Board of Ed, right? They're the, we're going to oversee the Texas Education Code, which is what we live and die by in education. And they also provide guidance, but they are really, after the governor, or I guess you would say, yeah, the legislature is going to set like laws into the T E, T E C. But after the governor, I guess TEA would be like our look to. And something you should know about the commissioner is he is not voted on. He is appointed by the governor. So, so go the governor, so goes the TA Commission, so goes TEA. So you don't, I've never seen a commissioner go, I don't know, Governor, thank you for appointing me, but I'm going to do my own thing. I've never seen that. So if you have a very conservative governor, a very progressive governor, that's the kind of education agency you're going to have for that term. And we've had Mike Marath for quite some time.
And Mike Marath, tell us a little bit about him. Does he have an education background? How would a governor even go about selecting someone for such an important position like this?
Thank you for asking. I get to use a little bit of my US history teacher learning and knowledge. So if you've ever heard of cronyism, that Andrew Jackson started that. So for all of the people that supported his campaign, he was like, I got you. You're going to be, you want to be a judge? I got you. You want to be the head of something? You have no experience? Don't worry about it. You're my buddy, I got you. And that's exactly what happens even in 2022 is cronyism. So Mike Marath was on the DISD School Board. So I would say that's the, you know, he has children in school here in Austin. That's about as close as he gets to education. And so not like, he's not, wasn't a classroom teacher. I think he may have been a sub at some point. I've heard somebody say that. I don't know that that's like a fact, but as far as having someone who's like in it, knows it, has experienced it from like the classroom administrator, central office, he is not that person. I know it's, it's.
We're both just sort of nodding our heads. I'm not sure how to take that in.
So why would you put someone like that in charge of education for the entire school district? I will also say, sometimes I have to put my little tinfoil hat on. I will also say that when you have a background, because DISD spent a lot of time trying to turn public ed into privatization, turn it over to private, I call them privateers, but to turn it over to privateers. And you still see some of that CPN through TA. Look at how many charters they approve all the time, or they don't approve them. The SBOE, the State Board of Education actually approves them. And then TA kind of, you know, kind of checks in on them, but not like I would like to see. And I mean, just if you drive around my neck of the woods here in Austin, there's literally, I'm not even kidding, literally a charter school on every single corner.
Yes, we are going to dig deep into charter schools in another episode. I got very curious about charter schools because there was one that was going to come to my neighborhood. And I was like, I don't know how this is happening. Like we didn't vote on a bond. It just, no one, they didn't even tell us they were coming. A neighbor found out about it through a commercial map that they happened to find. And it was just like, what? So yeah, once I looked under that rock, I was like, this is another world. So we're going to help folks understand that because that's another, another thing that takes some time to dig into. So then the rest of TA, how is that staffed and filled out? Are they appointed, are those positions appointed by Mike Marath, Education Commissioner?
I don't want to step too far into my depths because I've actually applied for a job at TA at one point, but it's a state agency. And so you apply for it like you would, you know, the library, you know, the Texas State Library, or like you would apply to any other, you know, the Water Quality Board. You apply for certain positions. I would imagine that the closest, just like any other job, right? We'll post it, wink, wink, and then you get who you need in there. In fact, Austin ISD just lost someone to TA who used to work at TA. And so now he's back over there. So, you know, I guess like any other agency, you apply and then you get, you get the job. Like, you know, thousands of positions. There's people that answer the phone. There's people that have specialties and testing and all different kinds of areas. So it's a huge, huge agency.
Can I ask what maybe, but I know you guys are really lovely. Well, I know it's like, you guys won't call it dumb, you'll be nicer than that. But is it, is there an expectation that each new governor, granted, I know we've had these long-term governors, but each new governor appoints a new commissioner? Or if the, like, let's say if we were to have a new governor, is there a chance that he could still like Mike Marath and keep him in that position? Or is it just sort of an expectation that each governor appoints their own commissioner?
It's an expectation, just like, I don't know if you guys know a lot about the governor's office, like all of the secretaries, everybody you know. My mom used to work for Mark White back in the day. And when your term is over, that's how old I am, y'all. Back in the day, when you go, it's like the president, everybody goes with them. The expectation would be even if our new governor, from my lips to God's ear, were to be elected, it would be very foolish to maintain the same commissioner, even if you really like them, because there's so much negativity attached to that person. I mean, we just went through that in Austin ISD with the interim superintendent. We're like, might be the greatest guy in the world, don't pick him because we got a lot of bad feelings about the last superintendent that hired him. And so, yeah, I would think, I would hope that the governor would select someone new and someone with a background in education that is, you know, even a former superintendent. Because to be a superintendent, at some point you were a teacher, well, usually. And at some point you were a campus level administrator and then a central office administrator. So you've, you've come up through the ranks and seen and kind of understand. But just to pull some guy off the street and be like, yeah, man, hire a bunch of people to tell you what to do and then you decide which one, which thing to do, that doesn't work. I mean, we can see that doesn't work. Wow. And I will say this, he is not totally wrong on everything. I mean, the guy has some common sense. I agree with him on a lot of things, like he totally gets the teacher shortage thing, right? But he doesn't have any, any good answers for us. Because of the governor, he couldn't do certain things when it was during the pandemic. So again, he's, he's left some scorched earth. So again, I would really hope that our new governor would definitely pick someone different.
Yeah, I think it's really important for us to pause and note that the person who runs the Texas Education Agency is appointed by the governor. So when we say voting doesn't matter, I mean, it does. But these statewide positions have such big impact beyond just that specific person. It's like you're saying, the team they bring with them and the agenda they set forth for these big institutions that we have in this state. So we got to vote.
Yes, I want to, I want to backpack, I mean, piggyback on that. Which is to say that what was occurring to me is, you know, I just watched a little video right before we got on of Mike Marath talking about the teacher shortage and their, the commission, or not commission, excuse me, but the panel, I guess, that they created to look at that. And my thought was, as we were just talking, is that it does sound great. And I saw the map of, you know, the places that they've pulled teachers and administrators from. And it looks like it really is covering the whole state. And all that is fantastic, but I hear what we're saying, which is that, but when you're appointed and you serve at the behest of somebody who has a very specific agenda for that agency, when you listen to the feedback of a panel like that, you're going to be filtering it through that agenda of who you serve. And so while those people may be giving answers that are amazing and could really change the teacher shortage, it is also being filtered through an agenda. And so it is important to be aware of what that agenda is and listening to the answers that those folks are giving in ways that are open and actually solution oriented. So yes, voting.
Vote, 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 vote.
Yes, I really want to talk a lot about the teacher shortage. But before that, could you tell us about the work that you do, your company? I heard a little bit about you talk about this in a podcast and I was like, wow, this is such a smart business. I think.
And by the way, I would be a client of yours.
So like I said, in 2015, that's when I jumped out of the classroom because I just had to manage my son's IEPs. And so basically.
Can you tell us what's IEP?
Thank you for, I will do teacher speak. It is an individual education plan. And once a student has gone through the process of being admitted, reviewed or dismissed, which is called an ARD or ARD meeting, once a student has passed through that process and is then admitted to receive special education services, they are not admitted to special ed, they are able to get a service that is provided by, and Texas, if you just want to Google that, you'll see that we've been in trouble for that a while. And while I was doing that, I was mostly at home and then I'd have to pop up to the school to be like, why are you following his IEP? Why, why is this not happening? Why did you send this homework home? He gets more time, why are you failing him? And I mean, that is a full-time job, y'all. And then I had an old principal, Ed Martin. Well, he was my old principal from Webb and he was Ed Martin. And he was like, hey, I have two new teachers that have never taught US history, which is a tested subject. And by tested, we mean those students take the STAR exam. And he was like, I need some help. So I said, sure, I'll come over, you know, I was just thinking, I'll just come over and help them. He was like, I can pay you like a tutor. I was like, okay, sure. And then I started picking up a few more hours and he was like, I also have some students who are struggling. And I was wondering if you could work with them. And I was like, okay, this seems like a job again. And then after that year, I was like, I think I can make like a business out of this. And then that's when I just, you know, put on my, my hat and started thinking, I was like, basically what they want me to do and is come in and teach an educator everything they need to know to start school in like four days. That's a bootcamp. And so I was like, well, it named itself Teacher Bootcamp. So it's a short intensive course where I come in and work with your teachers. The smart, the smart administrators, and I'm not hired by a district, I'm hired by individual campuses. I come in and I work with teachers, generally in Title I schools. If you don't know a lot about education, should probably know that the average teacher that you're going to meet is a 20 to 30 something white female. That is not how our schools look. So we have a lot of cultural things that we need to deal with. We have a lot of things that they just didn't learn in their education preparation program. And that was the kind of sort of thing I was teaching. And then on the backend, I was also, they would be like, this teacher is about to get fired. I mean, gee, you're just making a lot of mistakes. You gotta come in. And so at that point, we would be co-teaching and helping them kind of like, these are the things where you can improve. What do you think about this? You know, parents are upset because you're not making phone calls. Well, I don't want them to scream at me. Okay, well, here's how you make a parent phone call. And it was just those really simple things, systems like, well, they're always behind my desk looking for the stapler. Why don't you have an extra stapler at the front of the room and a hole puncher and pencils? And then you have your zones. They don't go behind your desk for anything, right? It's just like, you don't know what you don't know. You just don't. And so that's what I kind of created. And it was, it was well, and I, I just, I was one person though, I never scaled it up. And that's what we're working on now that if I am elected, I'll have time to sort of scale it up. Since I can't technically work, I cannot technically legally, I cannot work for Austin ISD and be a school board trustee. And so Teacher Bootcamp is, it's moving online. And so you'll be able to go online and take the course like you would, have a weekly call with me. So it's still alive. It's just not the way it used to look when I was on the ground on campuses. And my last posting, I call it, because Doby just, I love Doby, middle school here in Austin ISD. They were just like, look, you have eight spots, we have 10 teachers. Why don't you just be housed here? Just come to work here every day. That's what we'll do. And that's what I did for the last two years, right up until and through the pandemic.
How do teachers figure this out if they don't have someone like you guiding them?
Oh my God, thank you for asking that question. Here's the thing, they don't and then they quit. It's what I call baptism by fire. They're like, hey, welcome to Austin ISD. This is how you take attendance. This is how you do da, 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 this, that and the other. Here's your insurance, here is your leave time. And all of those things are super, super important. But nowhere in that week do they take, they do a little mini SEL and a little mini cultural proficiency.
Talk about SEL.
Oh my gosh, so sorry, so sorry. So that's social and emotional learning. And that's where we're getting into more than just the content that you're teaching, but what kids are dealing with. Like most of, I will say, a big chunk of the kids in our urban school district here in Austin have lived through some sort of trauma. And by trauma, I don't mean like there's gunfights on their streets every day, but that is the case for some kids. But just think about divorce, a parent passing, a parent being incarcerated, a parent that struggles with drug addiction or alcohol addiction, or a parent that's just still dealing with their own trauma and is not parenting. So the adultification of young children. And I say that across every race, ethnicity and economic, socioeconomic status in our district. There are kids living through this trauma. And so we don't spend time teaching teachers that. We don't even spend time, like a lot of what I do is talk, I sit down and talk with teachers and I say, hey, tell me what your perfect class would be. And then I teach them how to get there. It's never going to be perfect, but I should, I was like, you know what? You're asking for trouble when you allow the pencil sharpener to stay on all class period long. Because if you haven't explained to kids that we're only going to sharpen pencils at the beginning, during our transition periods and, you know, at the end, before you go to your next class, then they don't know. You haven't, you haven't modeled it, you haven't said it. The district, I always said to people, there's no way I should be making a living in the size, in a district the size of Austin ISD. They have a teacher quality department. And we even had a clash at one point because they were like, why are schools paying money for her? And they were like, well, are you going to do what she's doing? And I'm like, no. And they're like, well, can you take the older, like three through five-year experienced teacher? And she take the zero to two-year experienced teachers? And they were like, well, we don't have time to do the things that she's doing. They're like, then why are you complaining?
And so what are they doing?
That's a really good question. I don't want to say that they're, they are doing, y'all, they are doing work. They are, they're doing professional development. I don't really, I don't work in that department and I don't want to speak against them because I really feel like they do what they do because that's their job. And there's somebody over them telling them what to do. And there's somebody over that person telling them what to do. But the person that's like at the top, which is, should be the superintendent, is saying, every teacher needs to receive X amount of hours of, you know, systems. Every teacher needs to receive, and I mean hours, not 30 minutes, not a half day, right before school starts, X, X amount of hours toward cultural proficiency, cultural, well, we call it several different things, but I really think that the best term for people to understand in Google would be cultural proficiency, understanding how and to value and teach through with other cultures, right? I'll give you an example. When I was teaching US history at Webb, the kids kept asking, they're like, miss, what's going on in Mexico? I don't know, I'll teach US history. But they kept asking so much so that I had to run a timeline to say, this is happening in the United States, this is happening in Mexico, this is happening, this is, remember Santa Ana? And then the view, because we only teach like the view of the heroes, which we no longer use that word, the heroes of the Alamo. But like Santa Ana, like what was his whole point? And when I began to, to look at it like that and talk about it, the kids were more interested in US history, because that's the test they needed to pass, because I was valuing their culture. And then they would love it when I couldn't, like if I didn't know a word, I'd be like, como se dice? Ah, cattle. And then I'd be like, vacas, mucho, mucho, muchos vacas. And they'd be like, miss, no, that's not how you say cattle. And so they were teachers for me also, right? And so what's happening is if you're not getting that learning, then you are just struggling every day. And like so many teachers that I have mentored, you're sitting in your car crying at lunch. Or I remember one teacher, I will not mention her name, she's a superstar now. And I've told the story a bunch as the people have heard it. But I would hear a door slam and I would get out of my room to go see what student was slamming the door. And it was like the teacher leaving the class. Like, no, 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 you can't leave the class. I know you're upset and angry, but you can't just walk out of the class. So here's what we're going to do, you're going to call me, this is before I did Teacher Bootcamp, but I was just a regular teacher. You're going to call me and then you're going to come sit with my class because they're going to just be working on something, it's going to be real chill in there. And then I'll go sit in your class. We teach the same subject, so no instruction time will be lost. But there's nobody really doing that. And we don't tell teachers, you know, get a buddy, like immediately. If you teach the same subject and there's a kid that's grinding, send them to that other teacher because they're going to be learning the same thing, but maybe they'll be more receptive to that teacher. There's nobody doing that. The district should have that. But, and they do, they have professional development, they have people that will come in and mentor. But there's, there's no checklist on it. There's no, yes, I've had so many hours of training and understand. And even they're supposed to have time to go watch master teachers, y'all. They're supposed to get a day off, like a couple of days, I think, to go watch master teachers. And it's like, we don't have subs, so just figure it out. FIO, you'll be fine. Yeah.
I will say, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in with my, granted, it was 10 years ago that I taught. But there's such a gap that you're really speaking to Candace between what it is like to be an actual classroom teacher versus what professional development looks like versus what you actually need. And, and maybe this is common knowledge or maybe people don't know, but when you are a certified teacher, you have to, in order to keep your certification current, you have to do professional development hours every year to stay current. So it's not like, there was a time when you could get a lifetime teacher certificate, but that time is over. Yeah, I don't have one of those, so good for you. So, you know, they changed that so that you have to stay current by getting professional development hours every year. So, I mean, that's one, like shout out to teachers because they continually stay on their game in terms of being educated about what's current. However, right, what you're speaking to is that there's a real gap between what is required and what teachers actually need to be functional in classrooms. And it can be so overwhelming. Like I will say, when you were talking about SEL, that kind of made my eye want to twitch because just as I was leaving the classroom was when social emotional learning was just starting to enter. And for me, I can step back now and see what an amazing push that is. But at the time it was like, oh my God, another thing, another thing. You know, they just keep putting things on our shoulders. And it was introduced to us, of course, right as we're coming back to school, right? Those few days, right before the school year is about to start.
When you really want to be in your classroom.
Oh my gosh, you are dying to set up your classroom. You haven't gotten to step foot in there yet. You need to set up your classroom and you're just trying to figure out the first week and welcoming kids and figuring out where you're going to have everybody put their school supplies when they come to visit for that first day. And oh, and then now they're putting this on your shoulders, this whole new thing that you're going to be responsible for teaching. And even if you can step back in that moment to see what an incredible gift that will actually be to your classroom, it's so overwhelming that you just, you just can't. And so that's what's so difficult about it all is this gap between what they're pushing on teachers versus really looking at each teacher's needs.
Are you guys familiar with the concept of a wicked problem?
No, tell us.
So a wicked problem is a problem that can't be, it's impossible to solve. I, I'm a Star Trek fan, so it would be the Kobayashi Maru, right? It's, it's not meant to be solved, because the factors keep changing, and there's no way you can actually solve that. There is nothing in education that is a wicked problem. We know the answer, but there's too much money to be made in a broken system. That is just a fact of it. If there's just too much money to be made in a broken system, right? We have to have, you know, these different groups and these different, that's why there's so many grants for all of these different programs. And if we actually did what was necessary, if an education preparation programs, we actually, they were a year longer. What I mean by that is you go through all of your college or your alternative, and then you don't get to go teach year one. Year one, you are an intern, and then we give you a thirty thousand or forty thousand, it would not be quite your salary. You might have to work part-time as a bartender. But we would give you twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars a year, and you would go work under a master teacher for one year. So that year one, when you went into the classroom, you would actually not be a new teacher, and you would have had chance to see, oh, I like that, I don't like that, well, I wanna know about that, I wanna do that. Instead of having, you know, a few months to do your teaching, and then having to work a full-time job, cause you still have to put food on the table, cause you can't work for free. We could do that. All of the money that we spend on people like me, teacher bootcamp.
But I love that instead, it was like, no, 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 this is very solvable.
No, there, there are no wicked problems in education. We know what the issue is, and we know how to solve it. But again, there's too much money to be made in a broken system.
Hey, that is your quotable, by the way, for this episode. Like, grab that, whoever, like, that is the one. So who's making the money, like?
Oh my gosh, so let's just start, I'll just start with me, right? So anybody that does any sort of education consulting, right? Now, there is some true education consulting that where you need to come in and, and, but I used to take this thing, I think it was called Kilgore Training, do you remember? It was like a long time ago. If you were a teacher in Texas, it was how to read the TEES. How to realize the, what, what you're supposed to be doing, like the verb in the TEES are the Texas essential knowledge and skills. It is what we call in Texas, our state standards. So it was a course to teach you how to read the TEES. Did you get out of college without knowing how to read state standards? But how in, how in the world can you get out of your teacher preparation program and not understand how to read state standards? If you go to school in Texas, doesn't matter where you're gonna go teach, you still need to know the value of how to read a state standard. Even if your state uses, you know, the common core, you still have to be able to read it and understand the verb and Maslow's and, and, and all of those sorts of things. Like, how are you not getting that? And so there's people making money on teaching teachers that, after the fact. There's many, like people like me, teaching teacher systems, like you do not wanna have kids pass a piece of paper up just by poking the kid in the back, and that's a fight you're about to start. Say, this is what I would like you to do. When I say go, I want you to pass the paper to the person on the left. How do we pass papers? We hold it out and we wait for the person who is receiving the paper to take it. We do not poke, and I'm talking, y'all, this is high school I'm talking about, not first grade, you know what I'm saying? This is high school. Nobody's telling them to prethink when I say go, when I tell you to move, and then give instructions. Like, we start talking to kids, start moving, like, wait, no, come, wha- We make money, cause nobody ever taught them that. Um, intervention and RTI, which is response to intervention, with students who are struggling is super, super important. Why do we have intervention? Because we didn't have time to reteach. Because, or we didn't have, we didn't do it well. There is one sort of, um, I guess you could say a methodology. It's like, let's say we're all teachers, we all teach third grade. Okay, and this is not compartmentalized, we all teach third grade whole, all of the subjects. And um, Claire's students, like on the last assessment, the short cycle assessment, they all made between eighty and ninety. Her kids are zooming. My kids were hovering around the seventy range, so we're not too concerned with me, but oh Nicole, honey, why is it that over fifty percent of your class failed this test? What's going on? So we don't move on. We now switch kids. We do a reteach day, and Nicole, Nicole's kids go to Claire, and maybe I just keep my kids, and then you're gonna, you're, Nicole, you're gonna do an enrichment activity, cause those kids already got it. Claire, you're gonna do a reteach activity, and I'm gonna do, I'm gonna kinda see the middle, middling, and maybe I'm just gonna reteach with a little bit of enrichment. That takes time, that takes money, and we're just rushing to get to the next short cycle assessment, right? So, but if we did it that way, or any other way that like a million people have come up with, then we really need to hire contractors, like outside tutors to come in, um, partners to come in and work with the kids. But those are three hundred thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollar contracts. Again, too much money to be made in a broken system if you fix it. The, the, the money tree, what does it say? The well's gonna dry up, it's gonna dry up. And it's, it's not to say those things aren't needed, but not to the extent that we are milking this cow.
So the, someone is pushing, 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 not slowing it down. Who is that? Is that the sup- is that, or is that the school board? Is that the superintendent? Is that T E A? Who is putting this pressure that is preventing y'all from being able to correct these problems ahead of time?
It's the Texas Education Agency, but honestly, it's George W. Bush. You're like, what? He hasn't been governor for a while. But the whole point is that George W. Bush basically raised high stakes testing with No Child Left Behind. That is what, the whole, the whole country runs on that now. So it's not just the state of Texas, it's the, it's the whole country. And so now it's this, the only way to know if kids know what they know is for them to bubble some sheets in. That is not true. If I'm teaching history and I, my kids can do a final project on the formation of this country, and it's, you know, foibles, and it's, you know, really great things about it, then I know that my kids learned that, right? So I don't have to have this, but if you go and look and see eighty-six million dollars, two hundred million dollars over however many years with Pearson and ETS, and now um, Cambian testers, right? And so.
Those are the testing companies, right?
Those are the testing companies, sorry guys. Those are the testing companies that we've kinda bounced around in Texas for years. Again, millions and millions of dollars going to these tests. So do I believe that we need to assess our kids? Absolutely. Do I think short cycle assessments are valuable and end of the six and nine weeks tests are valuable? One hundred percent, I'm an educator, I wanna know what my kids know before, I know that every day before they go out the door. But, uh, so that we can say, hey, the federal government says, are you doing well in English? No, you're doing well in math. We have to have some sort of gauge. We do not have to have the gauges that we currently have, the way we have them.
Well, and I wanna throw in another theory. Just, I know, I'm not the expert on this panel. But I'm, I'm gonna throw in too, that it is, I would imagine that it's also tied to having people in decision-making positions who are not educators, and who have not had significant experience in education. Of course, they're gonna be open to these privatized solutions that seem like they are the Band-Aid that's gonna fix it all, and that, hmm, no surprise, are also very expensive. Yeah, I was thinking, who put that bug in his ear? Who said, ooh, it's testing, testing?
It's when you look at, look at all of the different countries, and we always wound up like, you know, but this is like started in this, remember in this, well, you don't remember, cause you weren't alive, and I wasn't either. But I'm a history teacher, so I've spent a lot of time in it. But back in the late fifties and sixties, when we had the race for the moon, and it was like, oh my god, the Chinese kids are so much smarter than the United States kids, the, the, the Russian kids know so much, they don't got nothing else, they got no food, they're going to school. Right? In our country, it's, no one ever thinks about, the circumstances are different. In China, for the most part, back then, it was like, hey, if you don't show me something by third grade, you're gonna be working in a rug factory, right? You're gonna, oh, you're athletic, you're gonna be a gymnast. There was no, everybody has a chance, right? I used to tell my, as a horrible teacher, now I think, I probably shouldn't have said this, but I would be like, y'all, this is the only country where you can actually be a screw-up. So there's so many second chances for you guys in here, that you can, you can turn it around. Thank god you live in America. But that is the fact, is that it's different. And every, we don't have the same, like, if you don't do this, our kids have a chance to find themselves. And you, you're gauging them right at the moment where they have no idea who they are. Starts, we start in third grade. Right? And of course, we wanna know if they can read, we wanna know if they can write, we wanna know if they can do math. Those things are important. But those end of the year testing, and it's a lot of the pressure that teachers are not always sure how to the pressure comes from the teachers and from families, right? I taught in Title I schools for the most part, you guys, and it was always like, we had a beat the star, rock the star. And it was like, this is our chance to show the state of Texas just who we are. And that's the way it was, right? It wasn't like, the star is coming, so terrible test, it's so horrible, you know, da, da, da. And now I'm like, I tell my kid, she's like, what are my star scores? You don't need to know, you're fine, go, go enjoy your summer. They came a couple of weeks ago, and she's been asking, she asked me twice, and I'm like, yeah, I'll give them to you later, ask me later. I'm never gonna tell her. She doesn't need to worry about that. She doesn't need to worry about that. She's a straight A student. She does not need to know what those tests tell her.
And if you know anything, right, we all know that the way that you perform on tests is not indicative of your potential. So it's like, it's just.
And why would I give that doubt, that ability to second guess herself, for her to say, wow, I have a three point nine four? I'm vice president of this organization at my school, I'm in track, I'm in volleyball, but I didn't pass the star. Why would I do that? Or even say, if you didn't pass it, but now they have this thing called approaches standard, which means, you didn't really pass it, but you got close enough for us to count.
Close enough.
It's really, approaches standard says, good enough, good enough. And it, it should, that should be for me, I, I like that, that, that they have that now. But the, the test in and of itself is not healthy, and if you could prescribe how every school, every campus, every teacher, right, every school district would communicate the star, then you might be okay. But you can't do that, right? And I don't know if you guys know this, but you can't reward kids who do well, cause why, I mean, you shouldn't do that, right? So like, here are all the kids that passed star test, we're giving them a gold medal. So like, every other kid is like, oh, so, you know, we used to do that, we no longer do that. But we used, that used to be like a thing districts and schools would do, and we were like, no.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna have an episode where we dig in deep into accountability and testing, because that's another beast to spend some time in. Um, but since we have you with us, and you know so much about this, we would love to talk about the teacher shortage. Nicole alluded, uh, alluded to this a little bit earlier about the task force that the governor formed, and I'm guessing Mike Marath also is very aware of that, we don't have teachers, and it's a big problem. So can you, and with your history background, can you tell us? Has, is this a new thing? I mean, how was it ten years ago, five years ago? Why does it feel like right now we're in such a crisis point?
So I will say that for Title I schools, and by Title I, that's just like the federal code for schools that have a certain percentage of students that are what we call um, low SES or low socioeconomic status. We also call them eco-dis or economically disadvantaged. We're basically talking about poor kids, right? And generally, when we talk about poor kids, into that category falls black and brown, uh, certain Asian groups, and then uh, poor whites. And so when we look at all of those schools, they have always had a teacher shortage, because again, it's harder to teach in those communities because of sometimes lack of parent involvement, it's not always that, but and then sometimes lack of resources. So there's always been a teacher shortage, I just want everybody to understand that. Cause I have taught in Title I schools my whole career, except for a very short period when I taught the affluent students. So there's that. Has this happened before? There's always a teacher shortage. Like, we're always a couple of thousand of teachers short in the United States at any given point, right? Or like fifteen thousand or ten thousand in the whole country, including Alaska, Hawaii, and our protectorates, right? Like Guam, those places like that. Or on bases or DOD schools, like, there's always a shortage, but nothing like this. In case you don't know, Houston, the largest district in the state of Texas, is down one thousand teachers. Sifyr, the third largest district, is almost at one thousand teachers. Dallas ISD is hovering around seven hundred, and Austin ISD, when I looked yesterday, was five sixty-eight. That is a lot of missing teachers. Now, to the panel that the governor has set up, which really is being administered by Michael Marath and whoever he told to actually go do it, cause I'm sure he's not going to the meetings every time. Great, that is a beautiful optic. It doesn't multiply teachers. And we need, there's no solutions that they can come up with that will fix things right now. Unless you wanna do what Florida did and say, hey, if you were ever at any point in the military, you don't have to be certified. Start school, and you can start teaching at the same time. We'll figure it out as we go. Or like Arizona, you can say, hey, yeah, you wanna be a teacher, you're in school, you've been there for three weeks? No worries, you can start teaching today, but you need to finish up in about five years, okay? Those measures are extreme. Now though, I wanna be really careful with this next one, cause I don't wanna offend anybody, but I am an old school teacher. And I remember when I started, it was like, excuse me, everybody face front, like my desk was in rows, I actually had chalk, like a chalkboard. I've learned so much and grown so much since then. And again, like you mentioned, Nicole, SEL, that social emotional learning is a whole new way to do things, right? And so, well, we should have always been doing that, we didn't know that as teachers, we should be doing that. As parents, we always do that, right? It's like, your kids three, you're like, I know you're upset and you're crying, use your words, tell me what it is that you need, right? We didn't do that with third graders though, right? And we were like, that is not allowed here, we don't do that in, in third grade, you are a big boy, a big girl, get it together. Right? We're like, now we're back to, hey, you seem like you're struggling. What is it that you need from Ms. Hunter? Alright, so we have this new thing called rehire. It's like retire, rehire. So there, and AISD has opened the door. So that's the first one I'm a little bit critical of, or I shouldn't say critical, I'm scared of, if they don't do it correctly, if they muck it up. So they're saying, hey, you retired, you used to teach for like thirty years, and you're, you know, um, you wanna come back, come on back. They can't come back like they left. They left in nineteen eighty-five, they left in nineteen ninety-five. I don't care if they actually left in twenty twenty. Things have changed, and you gotta get them up to speed, right? That is my, my first concern about the quick fixes that we have. My second concern is international teachers.
Talk about this. I heard a podcast about this once, and it was fascinating.
Um, so, and I haven't, and, and, and this is just me sitting in my office, kind of thinking about what are the implications of international teachers? When I work every day with middle-class thirty-something white ladies, and I see all of the hurdles that they have to overcome to teach black and brown kids living in poverty and trauma. And then I think, oh, hecka doodle, you're bringing somebody from a whole nother country that doesn't necessarily even understand how things work in our country. And I taught at Reagan, which is called now Northeast, that was the best job I ever had. Because it's a, basically an international school, and I had, eh, like I had the United Nations when I taught at Bertha, Bertha Sattler Means, I had Afghans, my Cubanas, I had everybody, but that helped me work with those parents, and I had to learn each individual culture. And like, I could go to a parent of a kid here in Austin and be like, hey, this is Ms. Hunter, you know, today Nicole was not following the instructions, and we can't have that, someone's gonna get hurt, blah, 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 blah. When I would speak with my Afghani parents, I would be, today Nicole was not honoring our class, she was very dishonoring of me as an instructor. Right? And then they would be like, what? And even when, like when I teach my white parents to speak with black parents, I was like, for the most part, and I'm not speaking for all black people, but generally, for the most part, our perspective is, if it's a problem, you're gonna call me. That's your job, you're the teacher. And a lot of Latinx cultures are like, you know, donya, maestra, you're in charge, you tell me what the problem is. Whereas in our, our, our um, Eurocentric cultures, it's like, I'm up here to find out what's going on. What do you need? Is there a problem, right? And when you put all of that in the same place with one person, they need to be able to do that. Now, that's a little bit easier if you are a native born to the United States, or if you've been here a long time. You've learned to ride the ebb and flow of the different cultures. But not so if you're coming from the Philippines or from Spain. And my concern is that they're like, welcome with no training. So yes, these are quick fixes, and do we need bodies? One hundred percent, but you gotta do it right. So if you're coming from another country, I don't even know, like, is there a course that exists? I haven't Googled it. Is there like, welcome to America, here's the American educational system?
Well, I'm sure there will be a consulting firm that creates one. That's quite expensive.
Well, I should maybe like invent that right now, thank you guys.
You might wanna get in on the ground floor.
I don't really have, like, it really should be someone who is almost an anthropologist, who could, you know, really speak well to different cultures in the United States, and who has studied like the different cultures that have meshed here, uh, or not meshed, cause they haven't, but that kind of are the amalgam of what is now the United States. Um, so I think that that's who would probably need to be in charge of that, not me, cause I have a lot of ideas, but I'm nowhere ready to be able to do that. But I think that that's super important, but these quick fixes, they don't bring more bodies.
Well, they exacerbate the problem, right?
They, they will.
You're setting people up for failure, who are inevitably probably gonna just quit, because it's too hard, and they're, they're, like you said, crying in their car on any break. And so then they quit, and then we just have the same cycle of.
Or worse, they stay. And then they're discontented. I actually, my hand, to God, you guys, one time I was in a class, and I asked the teacher when we were done, I was just observing, and they called me in, it was one of the situations where like, he's about to be fired, he does no longer work in education, thank god. And it was at a school here in Austin, a very low-income school, it's the largest Title I school, we have twelve hundred kids. Um, eighty-nine percent of them are Hispanic, you have a, like a handful of black kids and a handful of white kids, and a, a few more international kids. And at the end of the class, he was teaching sixth grade, which are still babies. And I just asked him, I said, mister, do you like children? From his course, he was so, you guys, and you guys don't know how to do anything. I just explained it to you guys last week, and I was like, I really want you to consider if this is what you'd like to be doing. If this is what you wanna do, I can help you do it better. I can help you get that sort of class I think you may want, but if this is not something that you're willing to invest in with time and energy, then I really would suggest, like, this totally not part of my contract, but I really would suggest that you consider another career path. But people think, hey, I got my BA, I got a master's degree, really kinda listless, I can't find a job doing what I wanna do. I'll just teach, I mean, how hard could it be?
You get summers off, you got a long winter break.
It's so, I mean, it's great, you know, but they don't really understand how it works and they think, oh, I could just, I, I know what I'll do. I'll go work for a school and get my loan forgiven for five years. And I always tell my teachers in our truth talk, you have to stay for five years before they will forgive you. So can you make it is the, is the question. So I think the teacher shortage problem is a lot bigger. I think that honestly, I will just say Austin ISD has exacerbated it. We don't really need as many teachers. We wouldn't need as many teachers if there wasn't this debacle of essential area redesign. Long story short, the state of Texas, Texas Education Agency says you have to have so many minutes of moderate to, um. Vigorous physical activity. Our former superintendent went to a campus that was not going on. She was, um, so upset. So she's crap, scrapped the whole thing of where kids have ABC art, PE music, art, PE music. Over a three day period and said, we're gonna do PE every day. Every day we're gonna do PE. But that means that we have to hire fifty-five more art, PE and music teachers and a hundred and two physical education TAs. I'm sorry ma'am, that's not a thing. There, there's no such thing as a physical education teaching assistant. Oh, you mean you just wanna hire another body to do something that you can't pay another teacher to do? They have no training in health. They have no training in education. And you just gonna turn them loose with kids every third day? Is that what you're saying you're gonna do? So that exacerbated our hiring kind of issue that we have here in Austin ISD. And parents have spoken against it, teachers have spoken against it, kids have spoken against it. But it's that continual disconnect between what will work, right? So this is where we are. And so I can only, I think about other districts, their problems are not exacerbated by that situation. But they exacerbated the situation by not caring for their teachers' mental, social, emotional wellbeing. Paying what teachers are worth. I have nothing against sports, but I don't think that you should make millions of dollars for throwing a ball. Or saying some lines to some music and you, the, the fate of America is in the hands of these people and you wanna pay them? Thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars? There is no teacher that should start teaching in the United States that is not making six figures for the amount of work we do. I say, pay me by the hour. As a teacher, I was always like, pay me by the hour and let me get overtime and double time. I mean, in triple time for, for Sunday and double time for Saturday and then holidays. Yeah, pay me by the hour. Cause I would for sure make six figures at that point.
Heck yeah. I don't know any teacher who doesn't work. I, I, we all work in the summer. I mean. Yes, you might take a teeny vacation time, but you're also starting to think ahead for the next year. You're one hundred, we would get together as a team too and team plan over the summers, not to mention the professional development. That we were having to attend over the summer. One hundred percent, you're always working. I would have a designated day too. Or my husband would pick up my kids so that I could work late. And so those are the nights I would work till like eight or nine or whatever. And then go home and try to catch up. I always brought work home too. Like it just, it's not the simple job that so many people try to pretend that it is. It's incredibly consuming.
And that's how we get people into the business and then they realize they don't wanna be in the business. And here's the thing that is most damaging. So like I said, staying is super damaging, but then when you come and you leave in October. Or you come and you leave in November, it's like dude, stay till Christmas, at least wait till the Christmas break and leave, right? And so we have that sort of thing. I will tell you that last year, my daughter started, now, mind you, and she spent most of fifth, the last part of fifth grade in her room. Then she spent sixth grade in her room. And then her first year in middle school, seventh grade, her English teacher comes and this, I do not fault her one bit. If I was in the situation that teachers were in at the beginning of last year, yeah, I'd have quit too. She came for one day. My daughter fell in love with her and she was done. They got a sub they had for a couple of months. My daughter thought he was really cool. He got a full-time job in Round Rock. They had another sub stint and then they got another semi-permanent teacher whom they loved. And then that person left like in March for, there was like some sort of issue with certification or whatever. And then they got a sub and I'm not joking guys, three days before school is over, the sub went into labor and then they just had. So yes, she took the, 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 the ELA, the English Language Arts Star. And she got, actually approaches and that's a miracle. That is a miracle considering she did not have a consistent teacher. Now, my daughter is at a very affluent, not a very, but an affluent school. That's a fine arts academy that has resources, parents that show up to do work, PTA, all that sort of thing. Now think about, I know I have a friend, my actual co-host. He would get notices like, yeah, there was no teacher your kid sat in the cafeteria today. Yeah, there was no teacher your kid was in the gym all day for that class. You know, just for, cause it's middle school. And so multiply that three or four times a week, five, six different teachers, cause there's no subs. And the central office going and subbing on Tuesday, yeah, that was real cute. Sub for the week, not on Tuesday. For the week, put your job on hold and sub for the week. You'll be making some different decisions. But this shortage is not going away. So there are no quick fixes and all the quick fixes will exacerbate the problem. I don't know. I, I have not thought of. And I, I wake up at seven o'clock in the morning, well, I wake up earlier than that, but I started seven o'clock in the morning. Reading Ed Week, reading Edutopia, seeing what the education blogs are saying and just, and in reading. You know, just, I'm on a bunch of different teacher Facebook pages to kinda see where teachers are. And there, if you go Google on Facebook. There are about thirty new Facebook pages of what else can you do besides teaching? How do you take your teaching skills and move them? And I, and I, I just kind of lurk on those to see what are the issues? What are teachers saying? Because that's what. I guess that's what, like just a teacher, if I would give a kid a test, that informs my instruction as someone who potentially, or someone who wants to be. A school board member, that informs me where teachers are, right? I am a teacher.
Perfect segue Candace. Tell us why you need him on the school board. Yeah, cause we are keeping you so long. I know. I, I feel like you could talk to us for hours and I would be on the edge of my seat for all of it, cause this information is incredible. But we definitely want you to share about your school board race. So can you first just tell us, what does the school board do? And why do you wanna do this?
And here's what you should know in Texas, it's for zero dollars.
So important.
So in our Texas education code, the way we've set it up and the way, um, the kind of the thinking in Texas is, is that we want people who just care. Right? We want people who just care. What that really equates to is we want people who are wealthy and can afford to take the time. And who are the elite of our society to run school boards, because that's really who it is. It doesn't, our school board should look like our students. And if you just Google any school board in the state of Texas, I'm just gonna be really honest with you. You're gonna see middle class or affluent white people. Right? A lot of women. You'll see one or two businessmen, but you'll see a lot of like, um. People who used to be former teachers, stay-at-home moms, that sort of thing. Is there anything wrong with that? Absolutely no. If your school district looks like that, then that's what your school board should look like. But if your school, your school district looks like Austin ISD, I think our, um, school board is, is, you know, we have, um, and we have someone who's Asian. Um, and when I say Asia, I mean like from the subcontinent of Asia. Um, we have, uh, a Hispanic, two African American, well, two Hispanics, three Hispanics and two African Americans. And then the new interim superintendent is African American. That is what a school board should look like. And I forgot, um, District Four. We do have a lady, we have two, um, ladies who are, um. I would say Eurocentric background. I have no idea if they're English, British, Canadian, I don't know, right? But they present to white, that's how I can say it. Um, and so for me, I. Like I said, I never knew this, but once I started digging in and wanting to do it and helping people and I started doing it. And that is really, like I said, ramped up since twenty twenty where people are like, hey, can you, this is an issue going on on my campus. Can you help us problem solve? Or hey, this is an issue going on. What can we do? Who should we talk to? And I just began being that resource. And I actually had a really great compliment from someone at, um, a union meeting I went to recently. They're saying. You're more of a trustee than some of our trustees. And I was like, thank you. And that's why I'm going to run. I'm already doing the job. I would say on a day-to-day, and there's some things, you know, I don't go into, I can't go into executive session. But when they have their meetings till one thirty, the, the ones that we see, I'm with them till one thirty in the morning. Um, now that they've opened back up, I'm like actually physically in the room with them until one thirty in the morning. Um, when Board Docs and Board Docs is an agenda setting. Platform that the Austin ISD uses. So if you Google Austin ISD Board Docs, D O C S. It will take you to the meetings and the agendas and it will show you like all of the documents that trustees have to read through. So that they can make good decisions. I'm going through all of those things also, um, the law. So you'll hear them say like DC local. That's what Austin ISD, that's our policy and DC legal, that's what the Texas education code, the state says we have to do. And sometimes they differ just a teeny tiny bit, right? So one will say you have to and one will say you can, and then we will decide if we will. Right? And so it's those sorts of things and all of that is found there on Board Docs. Um, I'm out in the community, uh, at different schools. I'm, you know, I have a couple of principals that will tap me and be like, hey, this is an issue, but I can't say anything. Will you make noise about this? And I'm like on it. I'll have teachers message me and say, our water just got turned off and we don't have water. And downtown is taking too long. And I'll call them like, hey, this is Ms. Hunter. Is there a reason that that school does not have bottled water? Do I need to go to Sam's right now? I will go to Sam's and get some bottled water and take it to that school if that's what needs to happen. So. As a trustee, you necess, you don't necessarily, or like you wouldn't do those things. Cause an advocate has a little bit more leeway of things you can do where you don't get into too much trouble, but I'm already doing those things. And for me, running is just leveling up, right? Like that's the next natural progression for me. Like why wouldn't I do that?
Candace, you are so qualified. I mean.
Thank you.
I wanna vote for you. I, I'm not in Austin ISD, uh, but okay, as a voter, yeah. Well, but okay, well, we should maybe say this, well, but okay, well, we should maybe say this quickly. The way Austin ISD is broken down is, is into districts. So school races are local, but it's also like hyper local because it's, it's, and but then there's also at-large members.
So in Austin ISD, by the way, in case you don't know, we are a district of seventy-four thousand students. We used to be eighty-six thousand. That should tell you something. So we are a district of about seventy-four thousand students. The majority of our students are Hispanic. Um, we have, uh, a very small black population. We have a large international population. Over a hundred different languages are spoken in Austin ISD. Okay? We have nine trustees because we have nine places. Seven are what we call single member districts. So we have District One, that is the district that I am running for. And, um, if you live up to Runberg. Crossing over to the west side of Lamar, all the way down scooting around Mueller. And that's because of the Voting Rights Act. We can't, if we would include Mueller, the white population would dilute the black population. So Mueller is that little scoop out. Um, and then going all the way to one eighty-three up into the end of where. Austin ISD around nine six nine, MLK, going down into Cherrywood, that's District One. District Two, I won't go through all of them, but District Two is gonna be your southeast Austin. Going up through Montopolas, coming down there. District Three catches the side of District One. That's gonna be your Runberg. So those schools are like Novato and, uh, TA Brown and those schools. District Four, that's gonna be your McCallum, your Lamars. Um, that's gonna be your North Austin, but not quite, uh, north, uh, it's like north, northwest. And then District Five and Six, that's gonna be your south, southwest. That's when you start getting into your Circle Cs. That's when you get into Keiker and, um, Nant Clayton, Bowie, those schools kind of ride that wave down there. District, District Seven, actually, like so it's five is north and six and seven. And then we have two at large, which is eight and nine. And eight and nine are. Every trustee is responsible for the entire district. But the seven single member districts are, like you said, hyper focused on that one. And District One, the district that I'm running for, has the most schools or ha, it has twenty-five, it had twenty-five. We just redistricted, it now has twenty-seven. It is the, it is, and that's because District One is in the core. It's where all of our schools started. So as the city moves out, there's less and less schools. So, yeah.
Well, I was gonna ask, as a voter, when you're voting for school board, what, how do you know if someone's a good candidate?
So it's, it's best to do your research. There are a bunch of candidate forums. And just like any other election, you wanna hear what they have to say. Should be careful, tested, uh, cause people always, you know, this ear candy, we wanna tell you. My, I promise to da, 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 da. And so it's really important to know what board members can and can't do. I'll talk about that a little bit later if you guys would like, but what's super important is to know if your values align with that person. And so I have not been shy about that. It's not a secret. Um, and probably anybody who's on social media knows. Cause like I make videos and talk about different things. I have a podcast. I share my opinion very openly about all sorts of subjects. And so people who are supporting me at this point, that, that big first push, those are people who already know where I stand. I'm what you would call more of a progressive, um. Candidate, meaning that I wanna have more. Of our decision-making process come from information provided by teachers, students, families. You know, even just, you know, our, our people who work on our campuses, right? I don't just want people in central office saying, well, let me tell you how this works. No, I wanna hear from that person how it works. So if there's a problem and we have to do something with custodians, then I wanna talk to custodians. If there's a problem with something is working, um, for instance, we had this end of the year test and teachers and campus. Level experts said, don't give us this test after STAR. And the district did it and the scores were abysmal. And we hope that what those scores are telling us are not true. We just hope kids were through and tired and just were like A, A, B, B, C, C, C. And I still have, that, that's what I'll spend this weekend doing is I'll be looking at, uh, STAR data. And I'll be looking at, uh, MOI data or middle of the year and end of the year. MAP is the test that we take for benchmarking to figure out if, cause the MAP test is telling us right now. That nine percent of African-American students are on or above grade level. And I don't believe that. I know it's bad. I know it's bad. It's less than twenty percent. I know that. Cause that's what, that's what the STAR is probably going to tell me. Once I disaggregate by race and ethnicity, but I think that that administering that test after kids were tired. Cause STAR is the usual, the stopping place. Then after that, it's all fun and games. So what the district did. When they were like, no, 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 you can't give us a test after STAR. We've been training these kids for years. They know that after STAR, woo, we are free. They said, no, we're gonna give you one more. And I don't know if the kids were like, yeah, no, I'm not doing that. And the only way for me to know that is to disaggregate the data and look at STAR. And then I'll publish that information for everybody, all the parents to see, to kinda say, yes, this is what it is or guys, here's the deal, here's the real deal. Here's what's going on. And that's just coming, you know, I'm not like, you know, an expert or whatever, but I can do percentages. And so that's the sort of thing, but not listening to campus experts, um, I think that's. That's, that's the thing that we, we miss out as candidates. So if you cannot personally, um. Get in contact with a candidate, which I don't know why you wouldn't be able to. Like you ain't that busy, but if you can't personally get in contact with a candidate, then, um, I know that I have email. Um, I, people, I like, if I see something, I'm like, hey, DM me. I'll try to walk you through that. Um, and of course I have. The privilege of time, because I work part-time for ACC and educator certification. So I have the privilege of time to do that. I always tell people, I'm gracefully unemployed. I, underemployed. I stay underemployed so that I can do advocacy. When I went to ACC, y'all, I'll tell you this little side note to, to do my job or whatever. I was like, hey, so thanks for offering me the job. It's really cool. But I just put a link in the chat. So if everybody could click on that link, it will show you like statements I've made to the media. It will show you some videos that I've made. It'll show you some of the advocacy work that I do. And if you guys are good with all of that, that's great. I'd be happy to take this job. But if you're not, it was really nice meeting you, right? I have the privilege to do that, cause poverty is nothing new to me. And the, they were like, oh, no, 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 we already looked you up before this interview. We know who you are and we're good with what you're doing. I was like, oh, okay, cool. But a lot of our board members don't have that leeway. They can't move, cause they work for like major employers, right? They're like, ooh, I really wanna make this decision. And I don't know that they're not making that decision independently, but I wonder sometimes. When you're tied to this particular entity that may or may not benefit our school, like, you know, sometimes I wonder about that tension. But, and I'm not saying there's been any ill doing. I'm just saying I wonder about that tension. That's a tension that I don't have. Again, speak to them, look up forums, Google them, like literally Google them. You can Google anybody nowadays. And if they've ever said, you know, news article, use the Wayback Machine, if they tried to delete things off of their, their things, use the Wayback Machine and go and see. Like, oh, that person posted and they said this, that and the other about public education. Do your research. But if you can't, y'all, League of Women Voters always kinda gives you a really good synopsis. Thank God for them. They always give you a really good synopsis of that person. And it's really general, but if you're just gonna like throw a dart, then League of Women Voters, their, their, um, guide is very helpful.
Where can we find you Candace?
All over.
Shout out all the things.
So currently, um, you can just find me personally on Facebook, Candace Hunter. But, um, as far as things that are campaign wise, at Hunter for AISD, H U N T E R, the word for F O R. A I S D. And I'm on Twitter right now. I'm on Instagram right now and Facebook. So those are the three. And I'm on Twitter right now. I'm on Instagram right now and Facebook. So those are the three main platforms that, because I'm managing everything myself. Those are the three that I can really handle. We're gonna have some meet and greets. We have, um, if you go to my website, um, and I'll hand that to you guys. It's a long one. It's through Wix, but it's uh
We'll put it in our show notes.
Perfect, perfect. So I'll give that to you guys so you'll have it. And then you can go there to donate, to um volunteer with me. And then we have a signup sheet, because I do a lot of volunteer work. Um, as a matter of fact, shout out to um Austin Voices um and youth, for youth and education. I just was over at Pars Fork, yes, Pars Park, I can't even say it. Forest Park Apartments yesterday, where we're giving away food and fans and all that good kind of stuff. Yes. And then on August fourth, we will be at Dobie um doing more good work. And then August eighth, we'll be at Novato. So if you want to come with me and volunteer, ask me questions while we're volunteering, I'll talk to you. We can do some good work and talk at the same time.
I love it. Okay. I have one more wrap-up question and then our, I think it's a fun uh send-off. Uh, okay. So parents are so busy. You know, you're working, raising your kids, trying to like keep your head on straight, not get sick anymore with COVID. What's the one thing you recommend they do pay attention to regarding their child's education? If they just have like ten minutes a week, what should they focus in on?
Honestly, if you're super busy and you only have ten minutes, the one thing I would suggest you do with that ten minutes is email your school's teacher. Your child's teacher. Email that teacher and it's like, hey, I'm Candace's mom. I'm just checking up on their progress. And that's it. Or call the principal and say, hey, I'm just checking up. Is there anything that I can do from my work or my stance to help you out? Because that's a quick, that's a quick thing where you can get in. I was like, well, we really do need more paper towels or, or we really do need somebody to come up and do tardy passes for thirty minutes in the morning, or if you don't have that kind of time, but um I, I would suggest that you communicate with the people who are the closest to your student. And then if you want to see what is going on largely, no joke, listen to my podcast, A I S D Ex officio. It's unofficial. We just, we, we talk about Austin ISD, but we have, we're not beholden to them and can say whatever we want.
Love it. That will be in the show notes for sure.
All right, Nicole, you want to kick us off? So we're doing this wrap-up segment.
Attention mentions?
So just mention something that has your attention. So if it's a book that you're really into right now, or a documentary you saw, or an article, something that you can't just get out of your mind.
I'm gonna jump, you guys, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna change it a little bit. I'm gonna tell you about an app that is amazing. And it works for people like me who are always out and about and just wanting to learn and know. Have you guys heard of Blinkist? It's amazing.
How do you spell that?
Blinkist, B L I N K I S T, Blinkist.
Okay.
And they have what are called blinks. So it, a book that I love and have read the entirety of, of two books. So I've read Atul Gawande's Checklist Manifesto. I love a checklist. I love the book.
I have that book.
But what, have you read the book though?
I've read like thirty pages. I need to finish the book.
So then, no, 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 no. What you need to do is get, download Blinkist and listen. So the main points of that book are in what are called blinks or like little chapters. And so it will give you the overview of the book, the most, it's been curated. I think with the help of the author of like, if people couldn't read your book, what is it you want them to know? And they have Renee, uh Brené Brown, they have like all of the, the really big authors and then they take suggestions like, what should we make a blink on? And so I, I don't have time to sit and read books for hours, but I drive everywhere and I can basically consume what five or six books would have been about in the course of a day, am I picking up and dropping off kids? Right? And so, yeah, it's, it's, and then of course I have Audible, but uh if I don't have time to listen to the whole thing, because I really don't have time to sit and read. Right? But I can listen and wash and like, I'm gonna put some blinks on and like do the laundry or whatever. So Blinkist is the thing that I cannot stop. They should give me some sort of kickback or we call it like a promotion or something.
Sponsor your podcast.
That's what I need. I'm gonna call them up.
And you're a real customer. Like you are really speaking to what they do.
I love it.
Okay, well, I feel like I always wind up just on, you know, some sort of show or limited series. Okay. So the one that I just finished is, I think it's called Web of Make Believe. I'm gonna have to confirm the name of it. It is on Netflix and it is uh a, I think it's six episodes. It's either five or six episodes. And the first four are individual stories about these sort of like internet. I don't want to call them scandals. I feel like that's a little too kind of salacious, but kind of, they're kind of internet scandals. And then the last two is a two-part series. Um, and, or excuse me, a two-part episode. And it is about um this guy who, well, he committed fraud and it, it, but in the, in the course of him getting caught, he does reveal the government surveillance technique that was being used that we didn't know about. And it was because he knew what the weak link in his system was. Anyway, it was just super fascinating. And it really helped connect what happens in, on the internet with the effects that happen in real life. Like it makes that connection really well. So I was super fascinated by it, did not intend to get caught up in it and then wound up binging it. So I think it's called Web of Make Believe, but I'll make sure and, and confirm that and put that in the show notes. And Claire, what about you?
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna watch that this weekend because I need something to watch. I had two come to mind, so I'll say them real quick. The one related to Candace's is um I'm, okay. I might not finish it, so perhaps I will use Blinkist, but I have begun to read Tiny Habits by BJ Fogg, which is a really great book. If you're trying to implement some new habit you want to do, and he's all about just breaking it down into the smallest step and building up from there. And it's great. It's very practical and systems-oriented and I love it. And then the thing that I thought about connected to Nicole's recommendation was I saw this uh show on Hulu called Angels and Demons about the Victoria's Secrets Rise and Fall. It was fascinating. So if you need something interesting about this huge company, American company, check that one out. I think that's it. Well, thank you Candace Hunter. I am so excited that you're running. As you mentioned, school board members make zero dollars, so you, you're basically trying to be an elected super volunteer and I appreciate that.
I love it. Elected super volunteer.
Yes.
There's another quotable. Claire, you've got the next quotable. Love it.
But I hope that um Austin ISD get uh, has you because you would be amazing. So folks, if you're
The honor of your service. But here's the beautiful thing, you are already serving. It's incredible.
But we need you to be that decision maker.
I think that it's great and I'm, like I said, I'm running, but I tell people all the time, because there are a lot of people like that are invested in this, like I think almost more than me or as, as much as me. And I tell them, I'm going to do the work, whether it's from the dais or my couch. So no worries, you guys. It's not like I'm gonna not get elected and I mean like, I'm done. That's not gonna happen. I still have a kid in the system.
Love it so much.
Best kind of candidate.
Yes, redeeming my faith in public service. Thank you.